We'll call to order the Sustainability Committee meeting on Wednesday, January 20th at 6:00 PM, taking roll calls. We have Mark Scully, Rich Cortez, Danielle Kelly, Kelly, and absent are Tim Waziac and Jen Bachelor and Bob Crowther. Bob Crowther is expected to be joining us this evening for this meeting, so I do expect him. And Tim Waziac said that he is hoping to jump in so that hopefully, actually, I think with the four of us, we would still have a quorum to be able to vote if not on a few The next item is public audience. We haven't received any questions from Erica, so there is no public audience at this time. Item four is to read and approve the October minutes, which was the last time we had a quorum. So that was October 21st at 6:00 PM. The meeting was called to order at 6:10. Present were Sheri Kalnan, Jeff Tindall, Rich Cortez, Ray Harris, Bob Crowther, Mark Scully, Tim Waziac, and Mike Tanca. Absent were Mary Turner, Sarah Kramer, and Tom Roy. Public audience was none. The approval of the September 2020 meeting minutes was tabled until the next meeting. Sarah Kramer will be stepping down from, as far as announcements, Sarah Kramer announced that she'd be stepping down from the committee. Her replacement will take a while for the Board of Selectmen to approve. Update from committee members, there was no updates given at that time. We had a guest speaker and discussion with Abe Helding Salorio with Sustainable Connecticut about the Community Match Fund. Abe shared a slide presentation with the committee. The CMF is a dollar-for-dollar match up to $7,500 for eligible projects. Sustainable CT funds, 50% and crowdfunding funds, the remaining 50% through their partner, Patronicity. About 90 projects have been funded and the total funding was $545,000. Fifty-three towns are involved with the program. Simsbury has one project submitted by the Simsbury Grange for an apprentice training for agriculture. Crowdfunding is online fundraising, like passing the hat. People can fund projects with checks or credit cards through Patronicity. The average donation is $160 per project and a median donation of $50 per project. Crowdfunding projects are available to participating Sustainable Connecticut towns. Projects must align with Sustainable Connecticut actions. There must be a public benefit, there must be 20 donations through crowdfunding. We can apply for crowdfunding by contacting Abe. During the Q&amp;A portion of the presentation, Abe gave additional information. The Sustainable Connecticut portion of the funding is provided through philanthropy. Only one project at a time for each town that is town-based or municipality-based. Two months is the maximum time for crowdfunding donations. The most popular projects are tree planting, community gardens, and pollinator pathways. The committee thanked Abe for the presentation and information. The committee will discuss the next meeting how we can leverage this program in circles. Next meeting scheduled for November 17th. A motion was made by Mike Tanca to close and seconded by Rich Cortez and the meeting, which ended at 7:04 PM, and the motion was passed. Minutes prepared by Mike Tanca. Mark, make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of October 26th, 2020.
I'll second.
Second, who seconded that?
Mark. Is anyone doing minutes tonight?
No, that was my next item, actually. I was gonna ask if someone wants to take on the position of being the Secretary, a full-time secretary, or willing to do it this evening?
I can do it this evening.
Mark, okay. The next item up on our agenda is the youth group.
Hold on.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We need to run the minutes.
Yeah. So all those in favor of passing approval for the meeting minutes of October, say aye?
Aye.
Or raise your hand, aye. Mark, Danielle needs to abstain because she was not there, right? So we don't, technically, we don't have a quorum.
No, she has the option of abstaining or not abstaining from the vote.
Right.
Oh, okay.
It's one of those weird things, even if you are not at the meeting, you can vote to accept the meeting.
Accepted, that's fine. I'm sorry. That is new. Thank you, Danielle, thank you.
Yes, no problem.
I can assure you, there's nothing incriminating in there, you're gonna be just fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion passes. Minutes are approved, and we will move on to, the next item is announcements of, just to let you know that the certification for this year, they are now doing a spring certification and a fall certification at Sustainable CT. The deadline for the spring certification is April 6th, and the deadline for fall certification is August 24th. If we decided to pursue that, that's what we would need to get the seminal in by.
Sheri, I have a question.
Yep.
Effect when your recertification is, is it three years from the spring or fall, or is it just that year?
Well, ours is three years from August of, so 2019, 2019.
Uh huh.
So we need to recertify by next August, August 2022. We don't have to wait until then, though, because there are some municipalities who are recertifying every year, just to stay on top of it. So it's something we, if we wanna try to do another certification this year, we can, or we can just table it until next year. But the nice thing is that we don't have to, we can look to achieve it by April of next year, and then it's, this way, it's done before the summer. I think that would be a good thing to do.
That's a good goal.
Yes, it is. The next item I have up is the youth group. Tim is not with us, so I'm not sure if he's made any headway on this or not, so I'm gonna table that for when he joins us, if he does. The other item I have is distribution of actions. We discussed at our last meeting signing someone to each action group, and I sent that draft out to all of you. Was there anything I needed to change? We have, we had discussed the possibility of adding some additional folks, and so the item for inclusive and equitable community impact, which is the new Action 1, we discussed possibly bringing in someone from the Spirit Council or Aging and Disability, Community for Care, and so we left that one open. The second item was thriving local economies, and that was assigned to Bob Crowther. The well-studied land and natural resources assigned to Parks and Rec, which would be Danielle, and Open Space, which would be Tim. Item, Action 4 is vibrant and creative cultural ecosystems, which was primarily its tourism. And so that one is open right now. Dynamic and resilient planning, we have Rich Cortez assigned to Clean and Diverse Transportation Systems as Mark with the Clean Energy Task Force, as well as renewable and energy-efficient infrastructure and operations. Action 8 is inclusive engagement, communication, and education, and we put Jen Bachelor, representing the Board of Ed, on that one, and myself and/or Tim, looking, because we would be looking to engage the youth group with that. Action 9 is strategic materials management, and I took that one. Action 10 is optimal health and wellness opportunities, and we assign that to Parks and Rec, Danielle, and Open Space with Tim. Action 11 is healthy, efficient, and diverse housing, that is going to Rich Cortez with planning. Action 12 is effective compassionate homelessness prevention, and Bob Crowther is taking on that with economic development, and perhaps one other person, if we had someone from another group like Community for Care. Action 13 is innovative strategies and practices, and right now, we just kind of have everybody under that one, and, you know, as we move forward, we can narrow down who wants to manage that particular action. So we still have two open seats on the committee. We have Mike Tanca's seat with the Clean Energy Task Force, and we have the Recycling Committee's seat with Mary Turner. I've reached out to Mary Turner just to double-check to see if there was someone who wanted to sit on the committee. I did reach out to her, I think, last month, so I'm not sure if someone is gonna take over her seat or not. And then I also put an email out to Bob Einstein on the Clean Energy Task Force, just to see if he would be interested in maybe taking Mike's seat as well. So we'll see what they say and then go from there.
Yeah, Sheri, I know Recycling Committee hadn't been meeting due to COVID, but they do have a meeting scheduled for, I believe, next Thursday?
Yeah.
So I'll just make a note to kind of check with them at that, at that meeting.
Yep, okay, that'd be great. And then if, you know, Bob, and then we have, we also have Phil on our team with the Clean Energy Task Force, too, as well. So if Bob is not interested, I'll see if Phil is available. I'm not sure, you know, what his workload is like being on a couple committees, and then we can determine if we need to go outside. Does that sound a good way to handle it? This way, we don't need to look to have the Board of Selectmen approve reorganizing the committee as far as the representation, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Input from you folks on that, Rich, Mark, Danielle?
Sounds good.
If Bob doesn't wanna be the representative from Clean Energy Task Force, then, I mean, I could, in theory, be that, play that role. I don't think I have another role, right?
My understanding, I thought we had three, the makeup wasn't it, three from Clean Energy Task Force?
Yeah.
So I think, Mark, you're already representing Clean Energy Task Force, Sheri's representing Clean Energy Task Force.
Three, okay.
And we had Mike, and Mike Tanca, and I checked in with him to see if he wanted to still be on the committee, but, you know, he would not be able to vote, so, but I think he's, you know, involved with other things right now, so that's why I thought, you know, I'd put this out to Bob to see if he would like to join. And then Phil, we have Phil Purcell, I don't know how you say his last name, is it Purcello?
Percyello, yeah.
Percyello, yeah, okay. So that was, you know, if we get members from those two committees, we can just fill those two seats and we'll be good.
The one other thought that you may want to, and it may be worth talking to Mary, is if nobody from Recycling is interested, I believe, and I'm not sure, Recycling may actually have some openings, so you could possibly talk to Mary about somebody who would essentially join Recycling with the goal of being on this committee.
So ideally, with the distribution of the actions, I think we were, we would like to see maybe two people assigned to each action, and I know we discussed, you know, maybe one other person on a few of them, but I figured, you know, until we get everybody seated and with these open seats on the committee, we can wait and fill in the other items once they're on board and go from there. Does everybody feel comfortable with that right now? Okay.
Yeah, we got a little bit of time.
Exactly. All right, so the, I don't know if you can, you can't see it when I, because I have a background. The Sustainable CT website, they do have the updated worksheet and the updated action list with all of the sub-actions, so you don't need to sign in or anything to access that information. So everybody can go in and download, print out if you want, but download the worksheets for each of the actions that you've been assigned to start taking a look at, you know, well, for you, Danielle, you can, I'll provide you with the information, but to compare what we certified on last time and what we can look to do this upcoming one next year.
Thank you. I looked at the website quickly, but I would appreciate the help of where to start there.
Yeah. One of the, one thought I had was, I was wondering if we should have maybe another, maybe in our next meeting, to review the website again and the information, you know, just to get familiar with it, since it's been a while? Would that be a good item for topic? Okay. All right.
I'm sure I've already forgotten how to navigate it, so.
Yeah. It won't hurt. Yeah. It won't, it won't take long to get up and running again, though.
You'll have to remember our passwords.
Yeah. So I need to add Danielle, though. So in addition, now, we also discussed at our last meeting about the working platform and how, you know, we worked off of the Google, and we, you know, that wasn't great, because it wasn't user-friendly with the Sustainable CT website and uploading the information for certification. So the other, the other one would be the Microsoft OneDrive. I think that's the one, you know, Tom and I were talking about this earlier. Does anybody have any experience with OneDrive?
Yeah, we use it at the state.
Is it similar to the Google system?
Yeah, pretty much. You put a document in it, multiple people can open it, edit it in real time, and then all the changes are there at the end of the day. They have versioning, so if something gets screwed up, you can go back one.
So we can create, like, you know, folders for each action, like we did, and upload the information supporting documentation? And I believe it's, and my understanding is that is free, like the Google Drive system?
That I don't know about, but I'll take your word for it.
Okay. I believe it is. I think it's, you know, when you get into the business level, then obviously, you're gonna have to pay for it, so.
Well, we don't have to worry about confidential data, so we should be fine.
What I can do is maybe just download it, transfer some of the information from the Google Drive over, and then we'll just kind of access it and see how it works. And if it works good, if not, then we'll just stay with the Google system. We'll just give it, you know, some opportunity to monkey around with it and see if it works a little bit better as far as the system with Sustainable CT. The other item I had up for discussion was the social media webpage, which Carrie, who works in Tom's office and Ray, together, will be working on that, and so they're coming to us saying, hey, just give us some, you know, information to upload, and then they're just gonna, you know, work it into basically launching it. Was there anything in particular that you folks felt would be good to put on the web, on the Facebook page to get it going, to launch it? Like, should we be using the Sustainable, you know, do we want to use the Sustainable CT logo, you know, at the top of the page? Do we want to create our own look for a Simsbury Sustainability Committee? We can, you know, keep it simple and just use theirs to start? Maybe do a contest, maybe?
I think maybe we have the town seal and the sustainability logo, I think would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll identify us, and then it'll sort of give our purpose right there at the same time. I just, I don't want anybody confusing us for not being a town group.
What do you think, Mark, Danielle?
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
That sounds appropriate.
I'm pretty sure that that's actually what, I'm pretty sure that that's actually what we put on the presentation to the Board of Selectmen in September. Tom, so you actually already have that, or to give, if you want to give it to Carrie to upload for the page? And then maybe put our certification, the press release, I'm pretty sure you have that, if you don't, I'll resend it to you, the press release as far as our certification would be good to put up?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe just, we could put, you know, who, I don't know if we want to put down who's the members?
I think you would definitely have that in there.
Okay. So we'll do the members, the logo, and the certification press release. And I believe we had a mission already developed when we initially presented to the Board of Selectmen, Mark, you know, that first presentation that we did? That last page, I'm pretty sure there was a, we had a mission statement.
I mean, not the most recent presentation we did, but a while ago?
The very first one, yeah, that we did.
I can look.
Let me see, I might, I might.
That'd be the one from, the one I got is September of 20, which I think, that's not the one you're talking about, right?
No, that, but that one has both the seal, the Simsbury seal, and the sustainability logo on it.
Yeah, I'm looking at that one right now. Beautiful picture of an energy-efficient house.
Should we have a list of the members on there somewhere?
I think definitely a list of the members and what committee they're representing.
We haven't, did we get a charter from the town? Like a statement on what we're supposed to be doing? And how we're supposed to be populated up?
Yeah, there's a statement in the meeting minutes related to when it was, this committee was effectively created, so we could, I think that could be massaged into a part of the Facebook page.
The resolution?
Yes.
Yeah. The resolution should go with the mission statement.
All right, I have, I have the resolution, so if you don't have a copy of that, I can send it. And the, I'm trying to find the presentation we did to the board. I guess I don't have it. I don't have it handy. I know that I have it in the file on my other laptop, so I'll pull that up, but I'm pretty sure we had some type of missions, if we want to add that to it.
Yeah, I'm not finding it either.
No, we can also do some photographs. We could do a photograph of the plaque that we received, and...
There's some decent photos, actually, in that PowerPoint that we did to the Board of Selectmen back in September.
Yes, so we could just pull from that, and you have that, right, Tom?
Yep.
Any other suggestions? Should we, should we have our meeting dates on there?
Yeah, that's not bad, our schedule should be on there. Are we included on the regular town schedule one on the?
On the calendar?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
Doesn't hurt to mirror that, but it's there.
Ray, were you raising your hand? Oh, okay. So meeting dates, members, photos from the 20, not, September 20 presentation, photo of the plaque, the resolution. I think that's, that's a good start, right? What do you think?
At least I have the page full. Sounds good.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, and again, I think this is enough, we can start getting the shell going, and then once we have that, we can continue to populate it.
I think we could...
And I think similarly, because we'll do double duty, Mark, this is the same information we'd be looking at from Clean Energy Task Force to get both of those pages up and going.
Yep.
I think that that would be a good way to launch it. I mean, maybe what we could do is think to maybe just add to it every, so often, like, you know, set a timeline, you know, once a month or once every two weeks. I mean, how, or once a week, how frequently do you think we should look to do that? Like, we could maybe say, okay, every Monday, we're gonna, you know, lot, you know, put some more information out.
Well, I guess, for my two cents, I'd say rather than try and set it based on the calendar, I would try to put it when you have something relevant to add to it. Because if not, you're gonna be, just at a certain point, I think you're gonna be, you know, on a Monday morning going, oh my goodness, what can we put up?
Yeah. What about putting the minutes up there?
I think the minutes are already, I don't know if they're already posted?
Okay.
I would, I would try to keep the Facebook page more of your splashy fun sales information, and we have other portions of the town website for the mundane, required FOI-type stuff.
Right, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I forgot we were talking about Facebook, because I don't do social media, so.
Yes.
I'm always thinking web page, sorry.
And there's so many other ones now, too, it's hard to keep up.
I don't do any of them.
Oh, you're lucky.
Yeah, no, I think this is a good first step.
And I, and then after we do that, I think maybe just doing, posting, not all the, not the sub-actions, but you know that they have the brochure that just has the, the main categories, so maybe that could be like the next one, where we just kind of present that information to get it out to the public as far as the topics that we're working on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, does anybody want to be the Facebook person, or should we just all, or does everybody want to send it in? I'm thinking it might be good to have one person on our committee who's coordinating with Ray and Carrie. So I'll be that person, then?
Thank you.
I'll start, and then if somebody else wants to do it down the road, hush out.
We should all just keep our eyes out for, you know, articles about sustainability themes, you know, from the different activities we're doing, you know, if there's something about the pollinator pathway, or clean energy, or whatever. um, clean energy or whatever, um, we'll just kind of all feed those.
Yeah, I'm good with that. And if I find something, you can pass it along.
Great.
Danielle, are you, you're on the Parks and Rec Committee, correct? Okay, because you, so you you're filling Sarah's seat, like she's no longer on the committee?
She's no longer on this committee and I was asked to fill her spot.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so for instance, the like the garden, uh, the community garden was like one of the things that she had worked on with our last certification. And, uh, and then the pollinator pathways was another popular trending, um, action. And Sarah and I had met with the folks that are handling the poll, the New England Pollinator Pathways, so that might be something, and and maybe you already have spoken with those folks, um, but something interesting.
But I would love to. I did hear a little bit about it. She did talk about it at the Rec Committee, so I do know what you're talking about, but I've not met with anybody.
Okay, okay. I can send you that information.
Yeah, that would be great. I think it's fantastic.
Okay. There is, um, one, one question I did want to raise, uh, having to do with the youth group. Mark and Mark specifically, I think because of the resolution or the, um, the climate action that we voted on at our meeting last week had, and I saw that there was an email also about the, there, there, they have a youth group action in that resolution as well. And the thought was that would be separate, but I'm wondering if they should be together, like one in the same.
I think that was Tim's suggestion, right, that they would be the same.
Yeah, I mean, because how, you know, like, I'm thinking, how many youth groups are we gonna have, you know, in town? I mean, you can have more than one, obviously, and each one could have a focus. One could be specific to maybe advocacy of climate change, whereas another could be, you know, focused on something else under the auspices of sustainability. But maybe it it would be easier to just have one sustainability youth group that encompasses all of it.
Yeah, I agree.
So would we need to go back to make a change on that or no? On that resolution or declaration?
Well, we'll, we'll have lots of time to do that. That this is like a first draft that we're now going to start to discuss with officials, but I think, um, just looking what Tim said. Tim said, yeah, I would propose speaking with the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen to support melding these two into one.
Yeah, I agree with that. So this is a, um, Mark, you want to explain the group that I'm referring to, this act, this declaration?
Sure. So the Clean Energy Task Force, um, has been, um, discussing now for a few months the idea of a climate emergency declaration. Um, some cities and towns, uh, have have done this, including a couple in Connecticut now. And we, we, we gave it a lot of discussion and a lot of thought. We now have a draft um, Declaration of a Climate Emergency that, uh, we are now going to start to discuss with the Board of Selectmen. I think we'll start with some individual selectmen and the, um, and 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 the Board of Ed as well. It's a, it's very early in the process. We have a first draft. It's probably going to be a, uh, it'll be interesting discussions. I don't know if it'll be controversial, but, um, essentially, we're saying, um, you know, we are facing a climate emergency. And, um, we need to have a sense of urgency about this. And so we need to align, uh, plans and activities in town to, um, to, you know, to to come up with a, you know, with a reasonable plan that with the proper support and financial support that, you know, would would be would be needed, will will reduce our emissions. Uh, you know, our our greenhouse gas emissions significantly. You know, the wording, I'm happy to share this with folks, and the wording will probably go through multiple iterations. And it's not something we, an action we took lightly. And some of us have even kind of resisted the idea of just making bold proclamations. We'd rather do things like just, you know, improve insulation on some of our town properties and and get more solar installed, but the we, there's a growing sense that, um, maybe this declaration will actually help uh, focus some, uh, some attention, focus our efforts and, um, you know, get get more done, so. And one of the provisions, uh, in the, in the, uh, in the document is uh, that a a group be formed, a youth group be formed to, um, to engage on this issue.
Right, so and I explained that we were also pursuing, uh, the the same thing, so you know, the thought was rather than having to, we just put them together.
Yep.
So, okay. Alright, um, now, everybody got a copy of the meeting uh, dates for 2021? Was, was that, uh, okay? Or do we need to make any changes? It's basically the third Wednesday of every month at six o'clock. So, uh, I would like to vote on that so we can pass those and get them into Erica. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the dates for our committee for 2021?
Sherry, I just had one quick, um, just question on that for you, and and, um, it's just a thought. Some of the committees will do something like take one month off during the summer or take a, you know, one month break. And you could do that one of two ways. You can simply vote the meeting before to do that, or you could pre-plan that. Um, if you put out all 12 dates, clearly you've now have 12 dates and you can always cancel a meeting. Um, but just trying to balance out how many meetings you want to have with the, um, time commitment for everybody on the committee.
I don't know. What are your thoughts, folks?
It works fine either way. It's six of one, half dozen of the other. Just pick one and go with it.
Yeah, I mean, either one's fine. The only one I would, I know Rec takes off August. It's kind of just kind of a little crazy before the school year, but if that's what you guys want to do, it's not like who knows what's gonna happen, so it's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I'm inclined, uh, you know, August, I think certainly is one that would probably be a good one, but at the same time, it's like, if if we keep them scheduled and it looks like, you know, only one or two people are going to be available, we can just, we just cancel it. Like we did before, you know, so I don't know, is there a difference between canceling and not scheduling?
No, no.
And and I think there's even advantage to just having them on the schedule, because if you take it off and then you say, well, actually, we're gonna do July instead of August, and then if you don't get it done in time, it's a special meeting and so I would say leave it and then we will, it's easier to cancel.
Just leave it, we can always cancel. It's not a big deal.
Right, well, because, you know, you might, we might find there's only one person for July, and then we've got August canceled, so we missed July, you know, or who knows? I mean, like what happened already, uh, with not meeting in November. And we did meet in December, it worked out, so, but I was thinking, I was almost, you know, wondering if we were gonna have anybody available for December, and I think because of COVID, we did, but, you know, just where where else are you going, you know? So, alright, I thought I'm, I'm in agreement. I think we should just leave the dates. Um, so I I'm putting this, uh, on the floor to approve the dates for the Sustainability Committee for 2021 that was previously emailed to everyone. Can we have a motion? Uh, uh, yeah, can someone make a motion?
To approve the meeting dates for 2021.
Okay, so Rich makes a motion, uh, second it?
Looks like Danielle.
Sorry, second.
All those approved? Say yay or raise your hand.
Yay.
With the motion on the floor. Anybody against? Motion passes and we have our dates for 2021 and I will send them to Erica tonight or tomorrow morning. And that's all I have for the meeting today, and we are, you said our hard close is at 6:50? Ray?
Fifty-five? I think you got a clean five, six minutes here.
Yeah, well, it's 6:44. Um, anybody want to discuss anything in particular?
You could.
Um, one, one other brief item, um, from the Clean Energy Task Force, because we had talked about it before. We took part in this survey of, um, by the, um, A C E E E, what is it? The American Council for an Energy Efficient Economy. And the results are in, and we tied for 12th uh, out of, I think, 29 or 30 towns, so. Um, we didn't put a ton of effort into it, so we probably could have done better, but, um, there, there was some interesting stuff in there, and there's a bunch of trainings available. Um, I'm, I started some of it today on promoting energy efficiency, and there's something on electric vehicle readiness. So, um, I know, I know, um, Eric Wellman's been sharing a little bit about it on, uh, on Facebook, but if anybody's interested, we can, um, share, share the, share the, I know at the Clean Energy Task Force, we're going to be looking at the survey in a little more detail and see where we can improve.
And then also, um, the, maybe mention the Energy Efficiency Campaign?
Yes, um, so we the, the, these Home Energy Solutions audits, um, that, you know, we, we pay for with our, on our electric bill, we have a fee that goes to these, um, efficiency funds. And, um, you can call and get a, um, get a Home Energy Solutions Audit where they come to your home. They do a blower door test, they'll replace, they'll do the weatherized, weather strips and doors. They'll replace a bunch of bulbs, uh, give you a low-flow showerhead. Um, they usually, um, these audits, there's been a copay or, uh, you pay like 75 bucks or 100 bucks, depending on what kind of heat you have. They're free now, so we've been trying to promote these. And in addition to being free, there are some really attractive rebates. You can almost get free insulation right now. Like a $2 per square foot, uh, you know, rebate on insulation, so um, it's a real no-brainer for doing this, and so we
Thank you.
Sorry? I think you're muted.
You're muted.
Then Danielle.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say thank you because we did that. I didn't know that. Thank you for sharing, Mark. I could take you up on that. Could look into that. Thank you.
Really good, yeah. And right now, Mark's gonna give you the phone number.
Okay, I know, honestly, because I was thinking we, we definitely need that, um.
It's 1-877-WISE-USE. Alright, um, so we did, Eric Wellman, Eric Wellman and I did a little video, um, we went, we went into SCTV. And, um, so that, that should be somewhere on the SCTV website. Um, but it really is, um, an attractive program. We want to kind of do more to promote it. Um, so as Sherry was saying at the beginning of the, of this meeting, um, you may have somebody who is interested in doing an audit, and then we can film it and then put that up on the page, so. Or maybe Danielle will film, film your audit.
Yeah, I would, yeah, Danielle.
Well, I'll do that. I'm definitely gonna be calling, so I don't mind.
I know, I I scheduled mine. It took me a while to get in, but I scheduled mine. I think I'm middle of March was as soon as I could get in, but.
Yeah.
Really?
If you don't have somebody else sooner than that, we could always do, you know, the video over here, but I think Danielle would be a much better host for.
Oh, you're so sweet. No, but I I really was thinking we need that. I didn't know it was free, though. That's really attractive, and thank you. I was gonna call tomorrow morning. I'll tell you.
As long as you get in the system soon. I think it's through March 31st, if you get it booked. And if, and if you're having trouble with that, um, telephone line, and I have heard that there are some backlogs sometimes, you can contact a, an HVAC, um, contractor directly.
Oh, thank you.
This past week, and I've got a firm that I can recommend for you if you're having any, any difficulty.
Wow, thank you very much.
Are they that far out, though?
They were for me, um, but
With scheduling?
Yeah, the just, I I went through the Wise Use and, um, I think it was Wesco Energy that that's gonna be doing mine, and that's when they were booking.
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
But due to the low, low price of free, I took it.
Yeah.
We're two minutes from being kicked off, just so you know.
Okay. Alright, so, anybody want to say anything else? If not, um, make a motion to close?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned. Motion closed. I'll see you guys next month.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Danielle.